Good evening. Thank you for joining us tonight to the Monday, August 21st, 2023 regular board meeting. Mr. Zink, could you call the roll, please?
Mr. D.
Yeah.
Ms. Bodie?
Present.
Ms. Casper?
Here.
Ms. Schaefer?
Here.
Ms. O'Connor?
Here. We move to number two, approval of the agenda. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Do I have a second?
Second.
I'll take Mr. D.
No.
Is there a discussion?
Yes.
Here. Mrs. Bodie?
I would like to separate. Treasurer's recommendations, letter B.
Very well. Anything else?
That's it. Thank you.
All right. Please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes. Mrs. Casper, would you lead us on pledge allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Under Board President's comments, I would like to welcome my friend and colleague, Mrs. Sally Green. She is a board member from Tuskegee Valley, and she came down today to visit Lakota East and to visit our school board meeting and to show support. I work with Mrs. Green on the Executive Committee for OSBA, and she is the president-elect for OSBA, so she'll be our state president next year. Thank you for being here. Dr. Lully, superintendent comments?
Thank you. Although we don't typically respond to public comments during a meeting, I'd like to talk a little bit about the concerns expressed tonight. Lakota's seeing a constant influx of students during the summer months, and likely during the school year, we'll see additional students coming in. Enrollments watch very carefully and making sure that classes are not overcrowded and that the contract is followed. As the first day of school approached, a few people were shifted into newly created classrooms, and as the shifts were made, I became concerned that teachers who provided needed interventions were being moved and those positions were being left vacant, like our Title I personnel. I had been meeting with central office personnel to learn what they did, and after meeting with Ms. Moore and learning that the champions professional development work occurred mostly after hours, I made the decision to move her to a classroom to help with increased enrollment. Currently, the district has a large number of teachers on special assignment working directly with students or staff, and for me, it made sense to take a teacher on special assignment from central office instead of one from the building. It was a decision I made to support students in a classroom because students are first in my decision-making. I'm reviewing each program and department throughout the district to determine what can be strengthened. This includes the low-dye office, federal programs, gifted, ESL, all the programs that are being offered. How does each one work to support students or their families in the district? Are they staffed appropriately? Is something more or different needed? These are all questions I'm asking as I work through this process. However, I've been here a few weeks, which is not enough time to create a thorough thoughtful reorganization plan. I am, however, working on one. Several positions were not replaced or were changed before I arrived, and each of those is also being reviewed to make sure that the correct decision had been made. It's a process that takes time and thoughtfulness, and I will continue to do the daily work of superintendent as well as moving forward with an organized plan that I will bring to the board in the next several weeks. So I thank you for allowing me to address those concerns. I have heard those concerns of the community. I understand. I understand why the optics are not good. I understand all of that, but I was making a decision based upon the least, what I thought would be the least hurt in a building for students to have a classroom teacher that was highly qualified. So that was the reasoning behind my decision. So I just wanted to address that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Lully. Mr. Zink, treasurer's comments?
Yeah, I wanted to talk about, as we started the school year, one of the issues that we talked about a lot last year was the enrollment of our students, and that's something that's under the umbrella of the treasurer's office. And so we challenged the Welcome Center to try to get the enrollment streamlined as possible so that all of the kids could get in for the start of the school year. So one of the things that we had found was parents were saying that it was a three-week turnaround time from the time they would try to enroll to the time that they could actually finalize the process. And this year, we were able to get that down to within 24 to 48 hours. So we did not have the issue of students needing to get in right at the last minute. That really took a lot of the pressure off. In order to accomplish that, it was a lot of work on the process flow, a huge amount of work from the, not treasurer's office, I'm sorry, the Welcome Center with Ms. Ziegler, Ms. Berkeley really looked through that process and figured out how to narrow it down. They were getting in front of some of the issues that were causing bottlenecks a lot quicker. We had two subs that would come in at different times throughout the summer that allowed for additional phone calls to be made to keep that working for everyone. So I want to really say thank you to the Welcome Center staff for pulling that off for us this year. That was a hot topic for many, many years, so I'm glad that that worked out well this year.
Thank you for your work, that of your team as well. Thank you for the work on that. You really did an amazing job getting rid of the bottleneck with really rethinking the process. Thank you for that. I know we all appreciate it.
And the last thing I wanted to do is give a shout-out to Ms. Dietrich at Indy and the Hub. She told me on our walkarounds for the beginning of the school year that she watches all of the board meetings, so when you watch the recording...
I'll say hi to Ms. Dietrich.
Hello. All right. We'll move to administrative reports. Dr. Lully?
The first report tonight is, schools started for first grade through 12th grade on Friday, and we're actually staggering the starts for preschool through kindergarten this week. The executive team, including all of the executive team members, visited all 23 buildings over a two-day period, and our feet were very, very sore by the end of that time, but we made it, and we were able to walk around and see great things happening. Buildings were clean and floors were shiny. They were ready to go. Teachers and staff were busy preparing for students, and when students arrived, it was very successful to do that staggered start. It was very, very smooth. There's a huge thank you that needs to be given to everyone for their preparation. All staff made it happen. I walked into our cafeterias and wanted to eat lunch every place that we went because it smelled so good and the food was so enticing. They just did a great job every place that we went. And I want to throw out a special thank you to the bus drivers for making sure the students got to school and are still getting to school. All those hidden heroes that we have in our staff never really are seen. They just go about doing their work, making sure that the schools are clean, making sure that the schools are functioning, food's being prepared, students are eating, students are getting to school. All the personnel have done a great job, and I just want to say thank you to everybody. We are focusing on getting out to our weekly visits starting this week, and executive team members, who mostly are academics-focused, will be visiting about five to six buildings each week, and then we'll see, all of our buildings, we'll see at least one central office person every week in their buildings so that they know we're here to support them, we're here to help the principals, we're here to help teachers and other staff members as best we can as central office personnel. So we start that this week. That concludes my report. I just want to say again that as I continue to learn about and monitor the work that's happening, the district's a very high-quality district, and there's so many outstanding students and staff here, and just focusing on the students can really make this district much, much stronger, and I look forward to that work with all of you. Thank you.
Thank you. Master facilities update?
Can we ask any questions?
Of course. Who would like to ask?
I know we got some good feedback when we were going around the buildings regarding class sizes, and it seems like we have been able to address that and keep those within the framework that has been set and the guidelines from the board. Will we be able to get an update in the future on where we are in enrollment numbers? And, or do you have anything you'd like to just share preliminarily right now?
As of today, we were 17,664 students. We still have four classrooms that we're monitoring and watching. We're going to delay a little bit in making any kind of movement to give the secretaries time to do withdrawals to make sure that those numbers hold firm. If they hold firm, then we're going to likely have to make a decision. If they, if it's because of withdrawals and the numbers drop back down, then we'll be okay with those classrooms that we've been monitoring.
Other questions?
Mine's more of a comment that I appreciate, that what you're telling the staff in the buildings about central office, I know there was some nervousness about a central office person being in their buildings once a week. I think that they were fearful that people were looking for a gotcha moment, so I'm glad to hear that we've reiterated that you're there for support. I mean, I think it's important, too, for the people in the building to see the central office and know the faces and the names and just, you know, in their departments, who they go to. So I appreciate that we're just going in there for support during your weekly visit. So thank you for reiterating that.
And there won't be any kind of observational write-up or anything like that. It's just a matter of letting people know that the central office is here. We are here to support you. We want to understand the work that's being done, and you can't do that if you stay in your office on Princeton Road all day long.
Yeah.
So that's why we're doing it.
Good. That's great.
I think that's great. Any comments or questions?
Just to add to that, just want to add something to that. Thank you, Ms. Kelly, for bringing that up. I think if the classroom sees the central office staff coming, it should be a plus. And then the central office, seeing the staff at work, helps them to also support them better. So I think it's a joint, it's a partnership. So I think it's a good thing, and I appreciate that that was done.
Thank you. All right. I'm sorry, facilities update?
I'd like to ask Mr. Passarch to come forward and update us on facilities.
Waiting in the wings.
I was like, just like magic, there he is.
Surprise, surprise. We're progressing with our master facilities plan. We had a committee meeting last Friday, as you may recall. Everything is on the website, too. It's updated and posted, so if there's any questions or any documents that are needed by our community, they are free to go to our website, and everything is posted there. However, we are progressing. Our last few meetings, we've looked at a variety of options. Our last option four was the one that we sort of focused on, where we would have two new high schools and convert the current high schools to middle schools and, excuse me, to K-5 buildings as needed. As we went through that process, we started to plot out what would a high school need as far as supporting facilities with athletics and stadiums and tennis courts and baseball fields, softball fields. And we got to the realization through our committee meetings that all the sites that we currently have could accommodate most of those things for high schools, not every single site had the opportunity to provide everything. So for instance, at one site, maybe you could get everything but your tennis courts in, or maybe you get everything but a softball court in, a softball field in. So those things were looked at, and we decided to take another approach to it and look at an approach of adding additions to the high schools in lieu of building two new high schools. So we're in the process of looking at that. We know we have the space to add classrooms and support space for the high schools, so now we're in the process of getting into those details about how that would actually look. The next part would be our configuration for K-8 and using Plains and East Freshmen, convert those to middle schools. Plains is already a junior school, which is nice, and it was built, when it was built back in the day, to have additions put on to it. So it's a good option for us to look at. And again, this building would be a great building to look at because you have a nice thing like this nice auditorium that we're in now that typically you wouldn't have in an elementary school. So converting this to a K-5 building, you know, you'd have some things that wouldn't be appropriate or right for an elementary school, but it'd be great for a middle school. So we're in that stage now, and the final thing is looking at the final number of K-5 buildings we would really need, as we already spoke to tonight. The enrollment changes that we've seen, we've seen increases in enrollment. Just trying to figure out the long-term plan. We'll have to eventually get a new enrollment update and work through that process to see where we're going to be over the next 10 years. Our last enrollment update was done in 2019, and we're already getting about halfway through that 10-year process to see where we are, and our numbers have been a little bit higher than anticipated. So as we work through that process, again, we'll post it online and continue to engage our community with that. If you have any other questions?
Appreciate the team's work in continuing to push this forward because I think we all spoke about this at the facilities meeting. We recognize the need to stop band-aiding some of our buildings that are having some issues and making sure that we do what we need to do to handle our increased enrollment and the declining buildings.
And the fact that it's not a quick process, that there's a timeline, and there's a lot of things that need to be done ahead of time, and there's a whole phase in timeline that, you know, it's not, it's not just like one day we're picking the plan and then tomorrow you're bringing shovels. So there's a lot of planning that goes involved, and that sometimes, I know I forget that sometimes, I just want to go forward, but there's a lot of pre-planning to make something this huge happen. So we appreciate all your due diligence on that.
Lot of different options that we're considering with funding and all the rest, too, so I think the work is good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on facilities?
Thank you.
Thanks, Chris.
Curriculum update?
Curriculum update is just to let everyone know that we're still collecting community input on the thought exchange for the CCAT committee meeting, for them to review that and to have dialogue about that. I'd also like to point out that the curriculum team and a group of teachers worked this summer on developing some curriculum units that were shared with staff. So I want to thank everyone that was involved in that for creating those and making sure that the curriculum was available for everyone to use.
Questions? All right. Thank you. Move to board update, policy committee, board policies, first reads.
They're too speedy for her.
I know. Should've been back there like Chris and just popped in, like an illusion.
Not as quick as Chris. On Friday, August 18th, the policy committee met to discuss 10 policies that are up for review and that are on the agenda tonight for first read. Just an overview of those 10 policies. Policy 0155, that is Lakota update, clarifying number of board members who are on each committee, ensuring that we align our practice with our policy. Policy 0164 is from Neola. It's a reminder for all school districts that if there are records commissions meetings, they must be noticed as special meetings. They can't be embedded in regular meetings. Policy 1531, just clarifying some potential confusing language on accrual vacation days versus receiving vacation days. Policy 2132, clarifying types of educational resources, board-approved. Policy 341901, updated language from legal on self-funded group health plans. This policy is only about a year old, so still working through aligning policy with practice roles and responsibilities that are embedded in there. Policy 3432 and policy 4432 are establishing a review team for unique and extenuating circumstances that may arise with sick leave requests. Policy 4422, clarifying potential confusing language on accrual vacation days and pulling in some language from the AG into the policy. Policy 4423, due to the changes in some of the above policies with vacation language, that policy is no longer needed. According to Neola, 4423 was a Lakota-created policy previous to 2013. That's no longer necessary. Neola does not even provide a 4423. So that was one we created well before many of us here were working on that. It's just no longer needed. Policy 6550, clarifying language about appropriate per diem amounts based on IRS rates rather than flat fixed rates in policy. When IRS changes, we change without having to have board approval then. So these 10 policies will appear on the September 5th board meeting for second read and approval.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkman. Questions or comments, board?
I would like to bring up the bathroom policy, and I sent that out to Dr. Lully, was that Friday? And did you guys receive a copy of that?
Mm-hmm.
So I would like to discuss this motion, and, you know, actually, I would like to make a motion that Lakota local schools provides restrooms and locker rooms for students, staff, and visitors. These facilities are marked as men and boys, women's and girls, or all sex or gender, single, private restrooms and locker rooms. All persons will be, will use a restroom that is aligned with their biological sex and assigned at birth or a single-use bathroom locker room. Individual needs for other accommodations besides biological sex must be addressed to building administration. All persons are expected to respect each other's privacy and dignity when using the restrooms and locker rooms. An appropriate behavior or violation of school policy and procedures will result in disciplinary action. Lakota local schools is committed to providing an environment free of discrimination, harassment, intimidation, or bullying for all persons.
So we have a motion to accept this policy?
Yes.
And did you say that the board received this policy prior to this meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second?
If I may, what I forwarded to the board was the Anthony Wayne procedures. I didn't, I didn't forward what you just read to the board.
All right. So let me clarify if I can for a minute, then.
I'm sorry.
Do you want to second it so we can have a discussion?
Thank you, Dr. Lully, for that clarification. So let me clarify, the board has not received this policy from you prior to this meeting.
But you received the Wayne policy, which is what I just read.
Is that a policy?
It's a procedure.
It's a procedure. It's not a policy.
Actually, yes, correct. Sorry.
Dr. Lully, how's the floor?
I was talking, actually, when you interrupted me.
You had actually interrupted Mr. D. saying something. Dr. Lully?
What I sent to the board was the procedure from Anthony Wayne Local Schools that Ms. Bodie sent to Mr. Zink and myself. I forwarded that to the Board of Education this morning, I believe it was.
And it was a motion that was passed?
It's actually not a policy. There was that.
It was procedure, not policy, and we checked, and in the email that I sent to you, I stated that Neola did not have a policy for this, that it was a procedural change in their procedures guidelines manual.
Okay. So can we, if we have a second, then, discussion we have?
If you would like to second.
I second for the motion.
All right. I have a first and a second discussion. Mrs. Bodie, do you have further comments?
No. Well, I would like to pass this motion. I presented another motion before, so I've amended this motion to hopefully pass this one. You either want to protect our daughters in Lakota from sharing bathrooms with a biological male or not. And I stated in the policy meeting that there are girls that are holding their bathroom, and Mrs. Casper said, do you know this for a fact? And actually, I do know this for a fact, that a grandfather let me know that his granddaughter is holding her bodily functions, thank you, until she comes home because she is afraid of going to the bathroom.
Why isn't she using the single restroom, the single?
Why should a female have to use a single restroom?
Well, if she's afraid to go into the regular bathroom.
Mrs. Casper, please let her finish.
We should provide those, we should provide, as a district, we should provide facilities for children who are uncomfortable going in the bathroom with their biological sex, which according to what has been done in the past, that is actually why we created the bathrooms and the separate bathrooms for those children. A female or a male should not have to go to a individual bathroom because they cannot go to their bathroom of their biological sex. That's just asinine, and it's ridiculous. So you either support this or you don't.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. I'm going to take Mr. D. as the second, and then we'll go to you, Mrs. Casper.
Okay.
Mr. D.
Okay. To make sure that everybody understands what Ms. Bodie wants, I believe that there's a process for everything because I've, some people have met me and said that, why is it that you guys are not voting for the policy? And I said, where is the policy? Because I know what was sent was the procedure, and I, my understanding of policy is you sit down and pull together the document, involve everybody necessary to make sure that that policy is completely written, and then Neola has to like, yes or no, because we have to be covered by every policy that we write. Either it's going to be a Neola-approved policy or it's going to be Lakota-owned policy. So as far as I know right now, I don't know what we're voting for right now because there's no policy yet written. This is a motion, and the last time I seconded for this is, was it, it wasn't me that seconded, but it was seconded, and we all agreed that let's go and write a policy. And I know, and I've read somewhere where Ms. Bodie is asking friends and everybody, give me a template of a policy on bathroom policy, which we have to have a template to go through the process, then we bring a document to the floor to vote for it. But right now, I don't know what we're going to pass by your request because it's something that, by the time it's written, that is when we'll know what it means, and everybody will vote for it. If I'm going to vote right now, what am I voting for? Right? That's my understanding.
So, Mr. D., we're going to let everybody speak before you speak again, so hold that thought, please.
So you're not allowing?
Mr. D., everyone up here has a right to speak before you speak again. That's Robert's rules. We're going to follow it, but thank you. Mr. D., just for clarification, Neola does not approve our policies. They develop policies, and then we approve them, but we might need legal counsel to run it through, depending on where it goes. Mrs. Casper?
I would ask the same question that I asked in the policy meeting. How in the world are you enforcing this policy? How? Again, you can't always tell by looking at a transgender child who has transgendered to this sex that they were not born with, so I don't know how we, I don't know how you enforce this policy, and it's just, I guess for me, there is so much around this policy that is unnecessary. What in the world, you're going in the bathroom, you're using the bathroom, and you're leaving. I don't understand what people are afraid of, and you keep speaking of that we don't want to protect our daughters, and I would ask you, do you not care about our sons? Because you never mentioned that.
Mrs. Bodie, you do not have the floor.
Again, it's, we had this discussion in policy. It was not approved in policy, and so you bring it up again tonight, and I think it's nothing more than, I don't know why. Is it grandstanding? Is it public opinion?
Passion?
We already, okay, I know, but we've had this discussion, and again, you're one board member. We operate as a body, and you're one board. Can I speak, please?
You're out of order.
It's exhausting not to be able to speak. So I guess for me, again, we've already had this discussion. It's not enforceable. Nobody that we know, anywhere that we can find, has a policy like this. And if someone is uncomfortable going to the restroom and holding it, then that should be, then the grandfather of that child should inform the child that there is an option for them to go to the bathroom and not have to hold it all day. Because in that, in that case, it's not that they're, that they have to go to the bathroom or that they're afraid to go to the bathroom. There are options if they don't feel comfortable going to the bathroom.
Do you want to tell them, Karen, that?
Sure. It's not a bad thing. Again, we're talking about going into the restroom, using the facilities, and leaving. There are far worse things going on in the bathrooms in our buildings. I just think that I don't understand, passion is one thing, but we had this conversation two days ago. You knew where it was going, but you continue to try to force something that the rest of us don't agree with.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Again, as has been...
Again, as has been stated, we've already discussed this in the policy meeting, we had a next step lined up of what we were going to do. I think we should continue to follow that protocol, because that's why it's there. I can say some of the same things I did then. We have a lot of students who don't fall neatly into the bundle of XY or XX, and when you look at, I appreciate all your comments under your breath, but please be respectful to us as we try to be respectful to you. When you look at that and do the stats, that would be at least 70 students that fall into these categories. Again, these are students, these are people's beloved children.
Exactly.
And I appreciate that we do have different people who have different opinions, and that's why we have made the single stall available to all students, to make sure that everyone has a place where they are comfortable. I'm sure there are people who are uncomfortable going into the restroom with a gay or lesbian student. So next, are we going to say, "You have to tell us your sexual orientation before you enter the restroom?" Because we might have a parent who's uncomfortable with that as well. I just have great concern with how this might be taken and what might be done. And again, to the point that's already been made, it's not enforceable. Not to mention that the case law that governs our area is clear that these children are protected under Title IX, and it would go against the current legal standing. Again, can that change? Certainly. But right now, we need to go with the case law that governs our particular jurisdiction. And otherwise, we certainly are not going, I would not support willfully going after something that has already been shown to be cited for the side of the transgender student.
May I speak now, Madam President?
No, actually, I'm going to speak first, and then you'll have a chance to say something else if you'd like to. We did discuss this, although none of us had that in front of us to even see that policy, or, I'm sorry, it's not a policy, it's a procedure. We weren't sure exactly what the background was on it, or where to come from, or any of those kind of pieces. So, I believe we left it at, we would get further information on this, and we would discuss it at our next policy meeting, which is the appropriate place and the appropriate process for this. I agree with many of the concerns that have been stated. I think I mentioned on Friday that in order to have a policy, it has to be able to be practically enforceable. And I think we had several comments about the enforceability and the suggestions that you made around that. We still haven't reached a practical place of doing that, and I, there's, it's certainly not an issue I would even consider putting forward tonight without a lot further work into it, and a lot further board conversation, and a lot of questions that haven't been addressed. So, I am not interested in moving forward on this. I think I said that I was not closing the conversation, that we could discuss it again in the next policy meeting. But this is very out of our process, and I don't find it an appropriate topic for this moment. Did you have further comments you'd like to make?
Yep.
Please go ahead.
First of all, I would like to say, it seems like the board did not read their email, because this email was sent out this morning. This is the process to pass, to pass a procedure, so I am following procedure, and it seems that the board needs to educate themselves on board procedure, or some board members need to educate themselves on board procedure. Making a motion is part of the process, and seconding it, and having discussion, and passing it, or not passing it. However, not passing it, in your vote "no" says that you do not support biological sex aligning with bathroom use. Also, Linda did say she would like more information on this, she did want to continue the conversation, so that's why I sent out this information. And also, the logistics of this doesn't really matter, that's just the left's argument. Children will police themselves. If a boy does not belong in the bathroom, a girl, or if a girl does not belong in the boy's bathroom, a boy will tell somebody. And I would also like to put this out there, just because, you know, we have laws that say thou shall, or to not murder, but people still do it anyway, and they are held accountable for breaking the law. So just because you feel that someone may break the law, doesn't mean we don't actually, or break a policy or a procedure, doesn't mean we don't make that procedure. We still make that procedure and deal, and people deal with the consequences, i.e., going into the bathroom that does not align with your biological gender, and the children and people will tell on each other for not using, for not following the procedure. So that will fix itself.
Audience, is that it? We'll do one more round for those who haven't spoken again, and then we're going to go ahead and move forward on this. Mrs. Casper, and then Mr. D., and Mrs. Schaefer, if you'd like to.
I would just like to say that my objection to this policy isn't because I'm afraid that someone might break the law and not be disciplined. My objection to the policy is how you're treating an entire group of students that don't deserve to be treated the way that you would like to treat them.
Mr. D.
So, my disagreement with the process that you are following is, by my understanding, Neola writes all our policies. Let me, let me correct that, because the way I presented it was not clear, and thanks to Mrs. O'Connor, you clarified. All our policies are written by Neola. But if there's any policy that we have to write by ourselves, and after we have considered all our legal team, it goes through the process of first reading, second reading, and then we vote. So, I have not seen a policy. What I saw today is a procedure. And if a motion is passed on the floor, and you want me to vote on it, so what am I voting on? There's no policy for me to go to vote on. It's a motion. And that, when this motion was brought up, we all agreed that it to go through the policy committee to write a policy. So what am I voting for? Before tomorrow, somebody will say, "This is what you refuse to vote on." Because that's a misconception that's out there. I've not made up my mind on voting on anything yet, because I have to vote on what is allowed within the law. So I have to make sure we are protected. I have my own personal opinion, but is that what is acceptable? Is that, is that going to be, is that going to put up, are we going to be vulnerable? Because my focus is to make sure that this district is running, and we have people coming in, we have properties in this district. If people are not coming in, how do you enroll? Those properties have been built, who is going to buy them? So, let's do what is legal, let's follow the process, and make sure we are, we are covered. I know, we have how many school districts in Ohio? I don't know where there is that policy that has been written and passed. Try and get a template, let's go through legal and see how it come out. That way, we are covered. Thank you.
Call to vote.
Thank you, Mr. D. I have a call for the voters, are there a second to that? Hearing none, Mrs. Schaefer?
There's not a second, it's point of order. When you called a vote, you go to vote, that's point of order, please.
Mrs. Schaefer?
Again, I believe that trying to pass this policy would be us willfully violating what the Sixth Circuit laws are when it relates to Title IX, so I do not choose to do that.
The Eleventh Circuit.
Secondarily, which we do not, we are not under the Eleventh Circuit, we are under the Sixth Circuit, but thank you. And then secondarily, you mentioned speaking to a grandparent today. I actually spoke to another grandparent too, who said they'd spoken to their grandchildren about use of the bathrooms. And that conversation went, that the kids were, didn't always want to use the restroom, because there might be a kid who was in there cutting class, and they didn't want an administrator to come in and swoop the kids that were cutting class out with them, and go to the office and get in trouble if they were there during, during break. Or, we know that vaping is an issue that we continually try to address. There's going to be kids that are going to the restroom, that are going to sneak and vape. That's what I've heard also, is a concern, and that was what these grandchildren also lamented, that it was other things that they were worried about, but certainly, a transgender student was not one of those things that they were going through. So, again, clearly different perspectives, that's why we offer different options in single-use stalls. Thank you.
So again, I second many of the comments that have been made, I think this is in process, this is not the appropriate place for it, and I do not believe that springing these kind of things on your fellow board members is an effective way to accomplish anything. And I also want to point out, although no one has mentioned it, you had said in the policy meeting on Friday that you were more than willing to accept the lawsuits. And as I pointed out to you at the time, as I pointed out to you at the time, it's not your checkbook, it's the taxpayers'. And we have to consider legal liability, we have to consider what we're putting our district into when we do that.
Absolutely, and vice versa.
Mrs. Bodie, you do not have the floor. Please be respectful. So, board, I am going to move us along on this. Mr. Volgeman, I am sorry, you do not have a stool to sit on while you were.
We need to vote on this, first of all, and then we.
Mrs. Bodie, Mrs. Bodie.
I still have more policy comments.
Then you'll need to wait, we have a motion on the floor right now that we're going to address first. Mrs. Bodie? Would you be quiet for a moment? Do I need to call a recess?
No, why would you do that?
Because you don't seem to be able to follow the process that we need to follow.
You don't follow point of order, nor do you follow all the votes.
We are going to take a five-minute recess, and then we'll come back together, and hopefully we can have a productive conversation. Board, please don't stay at.
Good news is, under board reports, we don't have to do board policy committee, because we're doing it now.
Board, I'm going to take us back out of recess. We have a motion on the floor, and we have a second, so Mr. Zink, we're going to do a roll call on that motion, and then we will proceed with further policy discussion.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Mr. D.? No. Ms. Casper?
No.
Ms. Schaefer?
No.
Ms. O'Connor?
No. Thank you, board. We will go back to the first-read policies. Are there questions or discussions on the first-read policies that are on our agenda for this evening?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
I'm concerned with Policy 155. I am actually fine with two or five members. It comes, I believe that this previous policy was created specifically to allow transparency. A committee of three or four would be a majority and leaves, and there are concerns that the impression it creates is that it creates the opportunity for board members to make decisions as a majority before a board member, before a board meeting. I also think that we should call a spade a spade. It appears that only, the only reason we are changing the policy is because Isaac publicly stated he is removing himself from policy, and this would be breaking policy. This also explains the duplicitous behavior we observe in our policy committee. So if we want to make it two to five, I think, or two through five, I feel that that is not being transparent to the community, and there are some problems with that.
So, I'm going to open the floor for board discussion, but I do want to clarify a couple of points. There is no board action that occurs in our board committees. They are publicly noticed, and they're publicly attended, and there is no board action that occurs in those meetings. So I also wanted to note that Mr. D. had rescinded his resignation, and frankly, this was a policy that needed to be addressed, which has nothing to do with one individual board member's actions of any sort. So, board, any comments on our policies that are in front of us?
Can I elaborate on that?
Please wait.
Any questions on?
Any questions or comments on any of the policies that are up for tonight?
I mean, I think we're doing the 155, just because we haven't been following that, correct? We want to be able to, in our bylaws.
It's our policy, it is our practice, right?
We have to address how many board members on a committee.
Well, we have to.
It is part of our bylaws, yes. Mrs. Schaefer, anything?
I'm comfortable with the changes at hand, and thank you to Rob for all of your
I'm comfortable with the changes at hand, and thank you to Rob for all of your work on these policies.
Mr. D?
No, I don't have one.
A final comment, Mrs. Bodie?
No.
Hearing nothing further, again, there is no vote on this. This is our first read. If there are any other concerns, please be sure to let Dr. Lally and Mr. Volgeman know, and thank you, Rob, for the work on this. All right, we'll move to Board Report 6A. I believe we probably covered Board Policy Committee, unless someone has something to add. Hearing none, we'll move to Business Advisory Committee. Dr. Lally?
Our first Business Advisory Committee meeting will be on Friday at 1:00, and the agenda will include presentation, conversation with Butler Tech Superintendent John Graft, as well as some other workforce development-type topics, so we're looking forward to that.
Great, thank you. Ms. Schaefer, Butler Technology and Career Development Schools.
I have the newsletters to pass out. There's actually three for you here, so if you could take one from each of those piles, please. And I just put mine away. One will note that they already, in their newsletter, have pictures from the first day of school. Unbeknownst to administration, students that day decided to do a breakfast in the parking lot, so it was kind of fun for everyone to arrive, and they're like, they thought that was pretty neat that first day after break, kids were anxious to get there early and be with their friends and hanging out in the parking lot already. So a fun first day of frivolity there. We did approve new contracts for both the Treasurer and the Superintendent at Butler Tech, so those contracts will now extend through 2028. Of the offers that were made to students who had applied, there has been thus far, it appears, as of July 31st, 90% retention. The top reason that people did not accept the offer for Butler Tech was stated to be the desire to stay in their home school, which is understandable. That can, even if you think you want to go, you might change your mind. We still are working on the continual issue of not having enough spots for students. We've spoken several times about the expansion with Ponham Leap. At this point, they're looking at having that be a three-year program. Right now, they have the 10th Grade Academy, which is career exploration, and that will remain an option, but they're also looking at creating a three-year pathway with advanced manufacturing, diversified engineering, and aviation. That will allow us to expand 300 spots for students, so the goal continues to be to grow opportunities until there is no waitlist, and that we think we'll be able to get there ultimately, but continue to work on that. In the state budget, one of the good things that the career technical schools received was something that Butler Tech was doing, but with no payment from the state, and that is allowing the high school students to access some of the adult ed opportunities, and we think that'll be a great opportunity, again, for kids, maybe even just their senior year to access, and even beyond the school day, almost treating it like a college credit plus opportunity. So that was great news. And then last but not least, we signed the lease with Middletown for the aviation hangar, so that is moving forward.
That's terrific news. I'd love to see the growth in that program. Any comments or questions from Ms. Schaefer? Community engagement, Mrs. Casper, would you like to tackle that?
Yes, we met last Thursday, and we kind of mapped out a little bit of the first half of the year with some community conversations, but I'm not going to give any firm dates right now until we make sure that the people that are involved and need to be there can be there. It's a lot of coordinating of calendars, and we're still working on some, but we do know that we have promised Special Ed and Gifted that theirs would be first, because we pushed those from last year, so we are going to do those in September, and we should hopefully have a date on those sometime this week. We're just trying to iron out, making sure all the people that need to be in the room are in the room. We're going, always the first half of the year, we do a finance one, so we're still going to do that in December, I think, right, Adam?
Yep.
Because November did not work, although we had a November date, and an ESL one, and then we're looking at doing a curriculum one in January and a parental involvement one in February. But again, that's kind of the first half of the year. We will tackle the second half of the year at our next meeting, and as soon as we have firm dates on these, we will get them out ASAP.
Did I forget anything?
We're also looking at, no, you've covered topics and timing very well. We're also looking at shaking it up a little bit, maybe trying some different models from how we've done our community conversations in the past, so we will be announcing those, maybe three or four different styles of doing them, just to make sure we're really being engaging and giving people a different way to be involved.
Get more people in the room to get involved in just a different format, so that people, we can kind of mix it up a little, get some different perspective on things. So again, as soon as we get those dates, Betsy will have them right out on the website.
All right. Any questions on community engagement or comments, Dr. Lally? All right, we'll move to Community Curriculum Advisory Team, our CCAT team.
Next meeting with CCAT will be September 11th at 6:00 p.m.
Anything further? Okay. Community Diversity Council?
We sent out a brief survey after the last meeting and tried to collect dates, so we're still determining which one of those dates that we sent out will be the appropriate date to schedule, and as soon as we know that, we'll announce to everyone.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a comment.
Mrs. Bodie?
I would just like to say that this Community Diversity Council is a joke, and a parent even stated that their goal was to convince others why we need racism in our schools.
Nobody said that. Nobody said that at the meeting.
It's DEI, which is racism, and they wanted to convince others why they felt that we needed racism in our schools.
You are literally making that up.
I am not.
Mrs. Casper, Mrs. Bodie?
Said that.
No. Can I talk about that minute?
Yes, but let's not make it personally directed.
No, can I talk about that?
Just talk in general about the meeting.
Well, I was going to say that one of the things.
Actually, we're on that meeting, so please talk about the meeting.
One of the things that we need to do is try to figure out, I think it was brought up today at the, in the listening sessions about four times a year, and as we got into the work, we thought that maybe that probably isn't enough time, so as a committee, we're trying to figure out the best way to involve the committee and to make sure that we are doing what the mission statement is. So there may be some tweaks in that. It was a long meeting, but it was a meeting where we had to kind of iron out some things, and we're still trying to figure out what the process will be. There are some things we have to figure out, because there was a lot of distractions during the meeting, that we're going to have to figure out a way to stop those kinds of things, because it just, it removes the focus of what people are trying to do in small groups. So it is a work in progress, so I don't want anybody to think that what we did on the last meeting is the end-all, be-all. We knew when we got together it was going to be more of an educational piece. People needed to understand what the purpose was and why they were in the room, and what their contributions would be, so.
And it is about breaking down barriers for all students. That is the purpose and the mission that has been put forward, and certainly where we're engaged in, as you said, we will continue to fine-tune there. Did you have anything else on that, Dr. Lally? Facilities Committee, I think we've covered it in our update. Does anyone want to make any further comments?
No, I think we covered it.
I'm sorry?
I think we covered it.
Okay. Finance Committee, Mr. Zink?
Ms. Schaefer, Ms. Bodie?
So we listened to two representatives from, is it Power?
Ed Advisors.
Ed Advisors. Why was I getting Power? I don't know.
Empower is the platform that they were talking about.
Empower was the platform, okay. So it was definitely, I was familiar with some of the language, but it was very interesting to hear about investments, and also it's creating a better opportunity for, potentially creating a better opportunity for our teachers to invest in a 467 or 57?
457.
457B, which is a government, sorry, I'm trying to, I might be butchering this a little bit, but it's a government-funded.
450, 457 is a government platform. It's a, it's an investment tool that government employees can use, which, being a school district, we are government.
Yeah.
And then also, we have the ability to use 403Bs, because we're a school district and a nonprofit, so.
Right.
Or a nonprofit, rather. So we have the ability to do both. What they had talked about was they would be able to potentially bring on a 457 plan and also have a 403B offering that could potentially have lower fees for our staff that chose to invest.
You said it so much better than I could. You should have started with you. But I think it was a great opportunity, and however, there are some concerns. I think that if we do use this program, then the teachers would have to switch over their 467B investments, and so I think, I think their investments are stronger than what is currently offered in the district. However, there are some kinks that I feel that we would have to iron out before a decision was made, and we would definitely want to hear from the staff and what their thoughts were before making a decision as a district or as a board.
Anything further?
I appreciated Adam's work with these consultants, because right now, it appears that the investment opportunities that we have have higher fees, both within the funds as well as the overall management fee itself, and they demonstrated how significant an impact that can have over time with the compounding interest, just simply by having a different fee structure. So while the 457 would be a requirement for all of our current and future employees to move over, it's my understanding that would not be the requirement with the 403B, and as we mentioned, that is going to require some additional investigation and work on Adam's part, but I appreciate that he's willing to take on this additional work in order to create a stronger financial future for our employees and give them better opportunities within that investment portfolio.
Yeah, this would definitely be a value add. When we're looking into this, it would be a value add for our staff that's not an expense to the district, or, you know, it's, we don't generate resources off more participation or anything, but it was a way of looking into, could we enhance what our employees are using to generate as much income for them as possible for their retirement years? So it was a neat, a neat presentation to listen to, and here are their options, and we definitely have some more questions that they're supposed to get back with us on, so that we have more information before we would look into further steps.
Very good. Anything further? Thank you. We'll move to Legislative?
I do have something else to add with the facilities meeting. Our next facilities meeting is on September 13th, and as I wrote this down this evening, I've realized that I have a bit of a conflict on September 13th. Would it be possible to potentially reschedule that for the following week?
You're not talking facilities, you're talking finance.
Finance, sorry, yes.
The next finance.
Finance, sorry about that.
I was very confused.
We can do that offline, can't we? And then we can notice that if we.
Yep, we sure can.
Okay, thank you.
All right. We'll move along to Legislative. Mrs. Casper, Dr. Lally, Mr. Zink?
Go ahead, go ahead.
There really isn't much to report with Legislative. We still have all the bills that are, that are sitting.
Just hanging out there.
Waiting. There really hasn't been much action on anything at this point.
Something that I can add is, I've been asked to be on a subcommittee group for House Bill 187 and House Bill 1. These are in relation to restructuring of real estate taxes. So we have done a substantial amount of work and research and understanding in the last probably four months, really heavy, so I'm really happy to be included in that work at the state level.
We appreciate that representation for our community. I will say Legislative calendar, at this point, the General Assembly is in recess, scheduled to return from summer recess by September 13th, and they are scheduled to run from September 13th until December 13th, and we generally can expect quite a flurry of bills at the very end of the year, so we'll be keeping an eye on that. There are several bills impacting education that we'll need to pay attention to. Safety Committee? Dr. Lally, would you like to take that?
Safety Committee met on Friday and had conversation, continuing to work to increase the safety measures that are used in each of the buildings, replacing old equipment as well as making sure that the equipment that's there is doing what it needs to be doing to make sure that all our students are safe and secure. And as always, because it's safety, it's held in executive session, so not much more that I can report, other than the Safety Committee is functioning and making sure students are kept safe, staff are kept safe.
It was definitely a robust discussion by the entire Board, so thank you for that and for the participation of our SROs, both sides of our district. Appreciate that.
I was going to say that we talk about safety is never, we're never done with safety. We never say, okay, now we're safe, but it was very interesting that one of the sheriffs from Butler County was saying that Lakota, we continue to look at safety and continue to always have it be paramount, but that Lakota is so far and above any other school in Butler County and the surrounding areas in what we do to keep our students safe, so that was nice to hear that.
It was nice to hear.
Doesn't mean we're stopping, though.
Yeah, I think adding volunteers in the hallways to carry would be a great idea, and I think that would definitely improve on our safety in the schools.
Any further comments? Very well. Board Professional Development, anyone? No? All right. Move to Treasurer Recommendations. A, Approval of Board Minutes. We have a request to pull B out, so we will do A and C, and C is Budget Stabilization Transfer. Mr. Zink, anything we need to know before we make a motion?
Yeah, on the Budget Stabilization Transfer, I did make some notes before the meeting started. The maximum allowable that we would have in that is off of a three-year average of our expenditures, 15% of that, so that would allow for up to 28.2 million. This current transfer that's getting ready to go in, that is half of the unencumbered fund balance at the end of the fiscal year, or 60, let me get it over to this. Sorry. That would bring our total in the fund up to $7,983,036.
Thank you, Mr. Zink. Is there a motion to accept the Treasurer's Recommendations, A and C?
Motion to accept A and C Treasurer's Recommendations.
Thank you, Mrs. Bodie. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Further discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Ms. Bodie?
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Board, number seven, Treasurer Recommendations, Approval of Monthly Financial Reports. Is there a first? Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Is there a discussion?
Yes, I will be voting no, because we are spending, spending money on programs that are destructive, and I do not approve.
Any further comments? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Board, we move to number eight, Superintendent Recommendation Action Items. A, Approved Personnel Items, and B, Approved Field Trips.
So moved. Oh, I'm sorry.
Is there anything we need to know, Dr. Lally?
The personnel items are typical personnel items for this time of year. The, the field trip approval, however, is, is for our students for Lakota East High School to attend the Future Health Professionals of America Leadership Academy in Washington, DC, which is a great opportunity and experience for them to have.
There's something that I could add to this section as well, is we do have on the Personnel Items, Budgetary Director for the Treasurer's Office. That is a replacement position that was left open at the very beginning of June, and due to the fiscal year timing, we wanted to hold on the posting of that so that we could get the best candidates available, so we're really happy about the new candidate that we have coming in, comes from the State Auditor's Office and local government background.
Does that leave you with all of your positions filled?
What's that?
Does that fill all of your positions?
We have one left. We've done it, we've done a restructuring a bit, and we've consolidated two down to one generalist position, that we have recently found somebody for that one as well, but it will be at the next board meeting.
Very good.
Also, local, has also a local government background, so we're really happy. Government accounting can be a bit of a niche to begin with. So, we're happy that we found, found people that have that background.
That's terrific. Is there a motion for Superintendent Recommend, I'm sorry. Yes, Superintendent Recommendations. It's because you were talking, Mr. Zink, you put me back into treasurer.
I had one of mine in there. Sorry about that.
That's all right. Approve Personnel Items and B, Approve the Field Trip. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Thank you, Mr. D. Discussion?
Yes.
Mrs. Bodie?
As far as personnel items go, I am not going to approve those going forward until we can have a better process. Going forward on who we are hiring, I do not support the hiring of an LGBTQ plus IA activist. And I think we need to do a better job at ensuring we have adequate applicants. Also, when the Field Trip is another left-wing activist group. And an example of how they influence our, our children, check out the Spark November 2022 article. A couple of things, just from the very front page, it says, "Our kids to thrive in a world and change it for the better," as if there's something wrong with our world. And then number two, it says, "Our kids, our kids can and will change the world for the better." So, they're claiming your children as their children. Please make note how the left approves of this organization. Houses.
Audience, please.
It also says, "Houses and Advisors," which include proactive SCL development in circles, a behavior system, employing restorative justice, which I do not believe in restorative justice, it's racist. Also, embedded use of the therapeutic strategies to promote wellness and minimize triggers. So, they're being therapists to our students. And they also support racism by hiring based on color because they support, they support, focus on building a strong, diverse board, which again is racist. And there are multiple lawsuits and out there already regarding this topic. So, I do not approve of this Field Trip, and it is again, spreading racism in our schools. Well, if they're medical students, then why are they?
Mrs. Bodie, please direct your comments to the board.
Being their therapist.
They're not. She doesn't.
Do you have any further comments?
Yep, that's it.
Mrs. Casper? Does anyone else have further comments? I will say that I think it's really important, I'm sorry. I will say that I think it's really important that our students have experiences that career, that expose them to future careers. That's part of the future ready. There are many career tech organizations. This is one of those. HOS is one of those. There's some amazing organizations that give our kids an opportunity to understand the careers and occupations that they would like to go into. I see that as what education is about. That is not left-wing, that is not right-wing, that is preparing our kids for the future. And I think those are really, really important opportunities. As a Butler Tech Board Member, I actually had an opportunity to attend some of those conferences. And the kids were absolutely amazing. And Julie, I'm sure you've experienced the same thing. The kids were absolutely amazing with what they were learning in high school before they ever went into the workforce. So, I have to completely disagree with your perspective on that. Mrs. Schaefer, you had something?
Just again, HOS is Future Health Professionals of Amer, of America. And our kids, again, as Mrs. O'Connor mentioned, have continued to go to these leadership academies, to different competitions, and excel. And not only has it allowed them to get exposure, but it's allowed them to then receive scholarships and leadership skills that they are then able to apply in whatever realm that may be. So, they can, they can then go on and be very successful in whatever their future endeavor is. So, again, to Mrs. O'Connor's point, I find this to be the basis of education, to try to make sure that our students have the tools they need to succeed, have real, real-world experiences, and be able to develop their presentation skills and dealing with other people and other adults. So, I appreciate that we continue to support these efforts.
I would like to ask for more of those efforts. Actually, I'd love to see it, offer more of those opportunities for students. Mr. D, you have a comment?
Yeah, I want to also speak out of my own personal experience. There were some of the trips that I experienced when I was in high school. I was interested in engineering, but my math was not good. So, when we visited a sugar plantation and I see how the process went through, I was so excited. That made me to be more interested in science. So, I think field trips have a lot of impact in, in education and how kids make decisions for what they do. So, we should do more.
I think oftentimes, those kind of activities can create a spark for students, and it's, it is tremendous experience for them. Are there any other comments on the Superintendent Recommendations, A or B? Hearing none, Mr. Zink, would you call the roll?
Ms. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. D?
Yes.
Ms. Bodie?
No.
Ms. Casper?
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor?
Yes.
Board, we'll move to closing comments, number nine. Mrs. Bodie, we'll start with you.
Great, thank you. So, first of all, I would like to point out the continuous misuse of Robert Rules of Order by the Board President and point out her error that when point of order was called and call to vote was called, she did not follow Robert's Rules of Order as well as an adjournment in the middle of a motion. I would also like to point out that, you know, other departments can support the needs of our children better than the Low-Dye Department. I believe that there was opportunity in the gifted area that we have been neglecting. Also, the comment, "Non-white," is a racist comment. I would also like to say, mention that focusing on ethnicity, referring that only black, that specific black students needed help, that is also racist. And there is current litigation regarding focusing on ethnicity. I also support the dissolving of the Low-Dye Program. It's racist and spreads divisiveness. However, the Board Members and Dr. Lally support it, as stated this evening. I also would like to mention that allowing a child to transition at a young age is child abuse. And we need to stop allowing the lie that a girl can be a boy and a boy can be a girl to continue. This is doing our children more harm and creating more mental health. And again, I support the dissolving of the Low-Dye Program. It's racist. So, I think I already said that. But welcome back to school this year. And I just want to let those teachers know that are doing what, you know, the right thing. I support them. And, and. Not indoctrinating our children and spreading racism, I will support those teachers. And I also will be making visits to the schools this year, so I'm excited about that. And. I also think that, yeah, this is going to be a great school year, and I look forward to our football team. Thank you.
Audience?
And I'd also like to point out that the Board President does not gain control of, of the board meetings either by allowing the community to constantly interrupt.
Anything further, Mrs. Bodie?
No, that's it. Thank you.
Mrs. Schaefer?
I wanted to pull up, I pulled up from the Ohio School Board Association 2023, "How do you call the question under Robert's Rules of Order? Closing debate on a pending motion is done properly only with the consent of the Board and not on the demand of a single Board Member. Under Robert's Rules of Order, it is not appropriate to make statements like "call the question" or "question" in an attempt to close debate. Instead, a member wishing to end the debate on a pending question and bring it to a vote immediately should make a motion to call the previous question. The motion requires a second. Once a second is obtained, the Board President should not allow any debate on the issue and should call for an immediate vote on the motion calling the question. The motion requires a two-thirds vote to pass. If the motion calling the question fails, debate on the pending underlying question can continue. If the most, motion calling the question passes, the Board President then takes the vote on the pending underlying question without further discussion or debate." So, just wanted to clarify that. Another piece is that, I failed to mention this, in the Butler Tech Report, there is a 5K walk run that the registration closes tomorrow. This is in honor of Sergeant Brian, Brian Dooley, who you may recall was killed while deploying stop sticks in 2011. And the proceeds from this walk, 11th Annual 5K, will benefit the Brian Dooley Memorial Award for Outstanding Cadets at the Butler Tech Peace Officer Academy and Police Unity Tour. So, if anybody would like to take a look at this or go online and get registered, it's GetMeRegistered.com backslash SGTBrianDooley5K. Congratulations to the Enrollment Center. That's always been a pain point for us, so I'm very thankful that that was done. And it was very much in the interest of our students in making sure they could be there on that very important first day. Speaking of first days, Kelly and I had the opportunity to visit a few, several buildings. I think we made it to 13. We ran into Linda at one of those buildings as well. And it's always great to see everyone so excited to be back, the building's all spiffed up. You know, hearing what, how excited everyone is for the coming school year. Like, we went into a classroom of a first-year teacher with us, and I mean, it was amazing. Everything, like, I just loved all the tools that they had, and it was great to see. We also thought we'd give transportation a break last week because they were a little busy and stopped in there this morning. And they shared that they have 19 substitute drivers this year. So, that was great news. There, some of those are already, though, having to fill positions because there are a few people who, after training, decided after the first week that carting a bus full of highly energetic children around was probably not their best skill set. So, they have had to backfill some of those positions already. And they also mentioned that they had over 50 aides now on the buses because of IEPs. So, that that right now is also in need. And they're looking for additional people to fill some of those. So, some of the substitute bus drivers right now are actually filling in as aides to help fill that gap. So, love to see, they're working so hard there to make adjustments and to meet everybody's needs. They said everyone there fielded over 60 calls that first day of school, and they're doing their very best to make all the accommodations. Another great thing on the first day of school, because it was on our personnel, we had the FMLA approval for Mr. Mattingly from Independence as well as his wife. And it was, I heard that they were able to FaceTime with him on the first day of school, and he was able to see the kids. So, that was great news. And I know everyone is, is pulling for him, and we are so thankful for his continued improvement and, and everyone sharing their well wishes for their entire family. So, here's to a great year. I know we're going to see great things amongst all of our students or staff and make continuing progress in providing every child the tools they need to succeed at Lakota. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Mrs. Casper?
Like Julie mentioned, we went to some buildings on the first day of school. And you know me, I love the shiny floors. So, we were very excited, like, to see how hard the custodial staff had worked over the summer. And the, all of the principals reiterated what a great idea the staggered start is, that how they get to focus on, you know, getting kids where they need to be at the right time, especially when the kids are transitioning to a new building. There were a handful of principals that would want to know if we could have half the students every day. Said that was above my pay grade. But it was nice to see our staff, all of our staff. I just, I marvel at how excited they are to welcome those students in. My favorite story, thanks for saving this because it is my favorite story for me to tell. We were at Woodland, and there was a little girl who walked into the building, and I was the first adult she saw. And she got to me and she goes, "I don't know where my classroom is." And so, a teacher heard that. They had teachers outside welcoming the kids off the bus. They had teachers in the main hallway. Teacher immediately came up and said, "Who's your teacher?" And she said, "Mrs. Smith." Why, that's not the real name. And she goes, "Oh, she's right across the hall from me. Come on, I'll walk you down." Took the student's hand, and the student had the brightest smile on her face after that. It was just, they just kind of, it's amazing to me how much they just get in there and do what's best for kids. They just, they're so excited to see them. The classrooms look so nice, and they're excited for the kids to come in. They're like, "We can't wait to have them all. It's really nice to have the half a day, especially in the younger grades, so they can, we can get to know them. But we really, like, can't wait to have all of the kids in the school." I had a, a separate meeting on Saturday at Lakota Optimus in the library. The midpoint library was the guest speaker, and she talked about the Edge that they're doing at the library through, for the West students. And she said, "It's made such a difference." She said, "There's still those kids that are walking over there and, you know, don't have, don't want to go to Edge, and they don't really want to do the homework." She's like, "We just kind of gently remind them that they have to do something quiet." But they've really embraced having the Edge there for our students. They did a video with the Firebird and the Crime Dog and the library mascot. They did a little video just showing what proper library behavior is. But they said, "Overall, the kids have been really good." And that is such a great addition for us to be able to have our kids go there. The one thing that I do want to, do want to say is that when, when articles or magazines or teachers put out there that our kids are going to change the world and make it a better place, right now, I don't think that's a bad thing. Because there's something wrong with, there's something wrong when a fellow board member has to call out everybody's mistakes or call out another board member for not doing something. We're not always going to agree on everything, or not. But there's not a lot of kindness sometimes, and I, I think that's what our kids can do. Maybe our kids can, our kids are better at that than the adults. They're more accepting of that. I just don't know why we constantly have to call out things that have been done wrong during a meeting or somebody that didn't do that. We're all here doing the best we can. This is basically a volunteer position. And it, the reason we are sitting up here, we want what's best for all kids. And I don't understand why we can't agree on that, on that. I just, it bothers me that, it bothers me that there's constantly, every meeting, calling out things that people have done wrong. And it, be kind, just be kind. Everybody just is up here doing the best they possibly can, and it's just really frustrating to me. That's all.
Mr. D?
Okay. Before I make my comment, I want to, first of all, apologize to my fellow board members. And I couldn't stay for the Facility Committee because prior to that meeting, there was an incident that happened that triggered some health issues that I started having in the last couple of months. So, that trigger, I mean, the incident triggered that situation, and I had to go through what I went through. So, I apologize. I, I have never been sick before, but in the recent past, I've been having health issues. So, I apologize for that. I hope I didn't ruin the meeting that day. So, last year, I was able to go around the, the schools when school started, and I saw the excitement in the faces of these kids. Went to some of the, some of the classes, and I saw kids having fun, dancing. And I remember Ms. O'Connor, we had, she saw me dancing, and she was surprised that I can dance.
It was terrible.
So, it was fun. But this year, I couldn't go out because I've been so busy, work, trying to get things together. So, I couldn't do it this year. But I want, I want to start with thanking the teachers because we know what you are all doing. Those kids, handling kids is not easy. You're doing your best, and I want to let you know that you, you, you have our support. We're going to support you to do what you do so that these kids get the best education that they deserve. Then the next thing is, I remember when, when Dr. Lally said that after going through the, the buildings, go back home, so. I happen to be too, so I understand what you're talking about. But I want to also mention, like, give a shout out to our hidden heroes, like Dr. Lally said, call them, but I call them unsung heroes. We have our janitors and cleaners, our chefs and cooks, our SROs, and all the people that do what they do so that the school runs properly and the kids have the best. There are many people doing everything to make it possible, but they're not being mentioned. I want to give them a shout out there that, thank you for what you do. I want to give them a shout out today that, thank you for what you do. We appreciate you. I believe that with the right leadership that we have right now, I can see a lot of good things coming out. And I look forward to better grades and better things for our kids in the future. Thank you.
Ms. Zink.
I want to congratulate Dr. Lally on a wonderful convocation. I thought that the gifts and the recognition of the staff was very, very well received. We've seen things, I've, I've seen things on social media and stuff where sometimes you don't think people would, but they do. They really, they really like that. So congratulations on that, that was well done. Also, the walkarounds that we did in the buildings to see all the buildings at opening day, I had to miss a few due to a meeting on the first day. But everything just felt so normal. That's what was nice. It felt like school had never stopped. It felt like everybody knew what they were doing, and everything was just going as planned. So congrats to all of, all of the staff for pulling that off so smooth. So that's all I have to add.
Dr. Lally.
I'd just like to just reiterate again the thank yous to everybody that's made the opening of the school very, very smooth. There's a whole tech crew that's sitting back there making this board meeting go very smoothly, as well as the central office staff members that I did not mention, all of them, the Enrollment Center, everyone. So it's, it takes an entire group of people to make sure that everything comes together for the students that we serve. So just want to say thank you again. And I'm, I'm really pleased that the start of school was so smooth and looking forward to the rest of the year being the same. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me start with Mrs. Schaefer. Thank you for clarifying that appropriate procedure was being followed. Appreciate that. And I would ask that continued provocative comments toward fellow board members and community members, I would add that that is not helpful toward maintaining a professional decorum in our meetings. And would certainly appreciate further effort toward not doing that. On a positive note, I will say that convocation was amazing. It's always one of my high points of the year. I love seeing the whole staff coming together. It was incredibly hot this year, and so I think everybody was feeling a little wilted by the end of the day. But it was still a very nice experience to recognize the different levels of experience for our teachers. First day walk around is also a wonderful thing. And a thank you, especially to all of our classroom teachers that go the extra mile to get ready. But I also want to point out another group that they've been mentioning, but maybe give them a little bit, a little bit more love, too. Our administrative team works all the way through the year. They don't take the time off in the summertime other than their normal vacation. And I will say that for every single building that I visited, they would open the door, they would welcome me in as though I had just come into their home. And they wanted me to come in and feel very welcome. And we're so proud of their students and so proud of their staff. And I, I want to say thank you to our building administrators who do so much work all year, and to our central office team. You made an extraordinary effort to get out to all of the buildings to show your support. And our administrators need to get a round of applause, too, I think, because they've done a great job. I do want to say, you had mentioned the Edge Teen Center at the library, or, I'm sorry, Mrs. Casper did. And I, I heard from one of our parents tonight, again, toward the library being a great community partner with Lakota Cares and being very supportive of the work that they're doing. And I want to say thank you, that they've been such a wonderful partner in so many ways to our district. And then on a final note, you know, when we talk about changing the world and making the world a better place, I have to go back to what I feel as a parent, as a mother. And I look at my two sons, and I say, "Every day, I see you two changing your own world." And I would think, as parents, that's what we want for our kids. We want our kids to, to be able to make a difference. We want them to be able to make positive impact on their world. And it's why we try to parent as well as we can, because we want that to be the legacy we leave with them. So I will never see that as a negative thing. As a mother, that's what I'd like to see coming from my kids. And I do. They're pretty good guys. On that note, I will take a motion to, I'm sorry, we're not going into adjournment, we are going into executive session. So board will move to number 10. We're going to do a motion to go into executive session. And then I will say that we do not anticipate any board action coming back out of executive session in case there are those that would like to get home and do homework with their kids for the night. So I'll take a motion to enter into executive session to consider the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of a public employee or official to conference with legal counsel concerning disputes that are the subject of pending or imminent court action based on Ohio Divise Code 121.22.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dean.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Please call the room.
Mr. Dean.
Yes.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Thanks, everyone.
Did the check guys go home? Did they come get these?
Isaac, can you shut your... Can you shut them?
Don't you see me?
About gotcha. Alright.
I'm going to pull us out of executive session. I will take a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Schaefer. Sir second.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Casper. Please call roll.
Ms. Schaefer.
Yes.
Ms. Casper.
Yes.
Mr. D.
Yes.
Ms. Bodie. Ms. O'Connor.
Yes. Thanks, everyone.